Well, given that it's 7:50, we're gonna call this meeting to our client of Wednesday, September 4th, the 2024 meeting of the Westboro Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your flexibility of switching a week. Definitely helps you through the start of the school year. I'm going to start with public forum. Seeing none, I'm gonna go into our faculty board. But before we do that, since this is our first official meeting with our new director, Stayla Lo and welcome.
Hi.
Hope you're adjusting well to our little library here.
I am. It's been on the whirlwind of a few weeks. We've got a lot going on, but that is not a bad thing. So yeah, I'll send the director's report unless there's any questions regarding my hello and welcome. So for this director's report, I kind of just tried to stick to the same format, just a little bit different than Maureen was doing. If you're interested in something different, allow us to say something different to somebody know. So you'll see kind of the graph I put on here. I pulled some statistics. Now, the only statistics we really have available to us are circulation statistics. So these are primarily circulation statistics. I am working on a way to track our interactions and our ability to usage so that we will have kind of better data to decision moving forward. So I just pulled the last few months and then last year, and I pulled July just because August wasn't done when I did this. So the positive thing is when you're looking at the trends in terms of July, we are kind of up across the board in terms of circulations, both digital and physical, items received from other libraries, new cards issued and registered cardholders. I couldn't pull that data. I couldn't pull it from the past. So I will have that moving forward. Present change over previous year, which is always kind of what I like to look at because people are doing different things, different times of the year. Our summer stats are always very different than our stats during the winter. So you can see our, again, up 7% on circulation physical, 9% on digital, 5% items received from other libraries, and 34% increase in new cards issued. Now, the number is small, so 34 sounds like a huge percentage. But it is a lot. And we're heading into September, well, we're in September now, which is Library Card Sign Up Month. And we've got a couple promotions that we're gonna be launching soon for Library Card Sign Up Month in celebration to try to encourage folks who don't have a library card to get one and/or folks who need to renew their card to come in and renew them. So as of today, we are partnering with Cha Cha Beans and Red Barn Coffee downtown. They're gonna offer a 10% discount if you show your library card for the month of September. Yeah, so we're gonna be advertising that soon. We just got it set today, and we're working on advertising and hopefully launching Friday for open house. Yeah, so that will be fun.
Is that for the month of September?
Yes. And it cannot be combined with any other offer. Putting it out there. And Jen, our team librarian worked really hard on that, so shout out to her. Our busiest hours, and when I looked back at previous director's reports, seemed to be that this was the trend. Saturday at noon, from noon to 1:00, is our busiest hour by far. It beats any other hour kind of by double in terms of circulation. Tuesdays at 11:00 and Mondays at 6:00. This month just happened to be that. And then we have a couple of our top circulated titles. I put a couple of items to discuss here. The first one, I wanna kind of move in... Well, does anyone have any questions on data sets? Yes?
I apologize for this. I spent too much of my life with new data.
Yeah.
And I really do understand the importance of new data in context. I really have a real context for this.
Okay.
And I'm new, so I don't want to take a big toll on my time. But my main question is, are these the proper metrics for us to be looking at at this point? We're developing... You mentioned you're working on this, but I'm not quite sure what to do with that. Stuff that you need from us to support you in your efforts.
So that is a great question. So thank you for asking it. So this is what we have right now. And again, it's primarily based on circulation. So check-ins, check-outs. What it does not cover is somebody walks up to the desk, asks about a program, and we help them get the program, and they walk away. That doesn't get tracked in any way, shape, or form. Most libraries would track every interaction. I think what we've done in the past is sampling because we do have to have that number for our interview reporting for the state. So we're looking at implementing a better way to track all the interactions that we have, not attached to any sort of patron record or who's asking or what. They're asking very basic. You know, I had a five-minute interaction at 7:50 p.m. informational. Right? Boom, that's it. And that will really help us understand how people are interacting with our staff. That will be more robust than just check-in, check-out.
And when you say check-in, check-out, is that returning books and checking them out? So every book that's returned is transferred to?
So this number is gonna be circulations. It's only gonna be check-ins. The checkout piece will go in, like items received from other libraries. It's mostly check-ins, check-outs. So somebody takes a book out, that counts as a transaction.
That's the circulation physical.
Yeah, and digital, the same thing. Somebody checks out a digital book, it's not gonna track it when it goes back to the system, but it counts as a circulation for us. These are statistics that Evergreen, which is our ILS, gives us. And they actually are really... It's one of my biggest reasons I'm happy to be back in CWMRS is that their meta-base recording system is really, really robust. So you can pull a lot of really interesting data. So this is just mostly our items served. So items checked out in the month. So we have plans in process. We're on our way to getting better data. We're looking at different ways to track... So we have a people counter, so we know how people are using our space. Getting more robust data in terms of how people are using our space will be very important in terms of moving towards building repair. And also, once building repair is done, how are people interacting with our new space? Because we wanna be able to show that the investment is worth it and that we are getting increased usage. There's a number of ways we can get that information. I'm not sure which way we're gonna go. We're still kind of working with leadership staff to figure out the best way to do that. So what do I need from you guys for that? Nothing yet. But I reserve the right to ask when I have come up with it.
And so do we also keep track of how many people use meeting rooms and how many programs are here and stuff like that?
Yep. So we keep track of all that, and that is data that we do have. And that's data that we can pull. I do wanna find out, you know, the averaged version of what the best data set to look at for you guys would be. I don't know that we're here yet, but I think we'll get there. Did that answer that?
Yes.
Okay.
It is one.
Okay. Any other questions on that piece? Okay, I'll move on. So one of the items that we wanted to bring up to you guys came to us from Tony, a local history librarian, in terms of deaccessioning a painting that was donated to us. This is a painting that we have never displayed publicly as far as we know. And I don't know that we're going to display it publicly with the project going on and figuring out temporary space. And so we did get a request that if it wasn't gonna be, come out, would we mind returning it? In terms of our policy and our intake and our accession policy, we are not obligated to return this. However, I think Tony's recommendation, and Lynn and I agree, that in this case it makes the most sense to give it back. But we wanted to bring it up to you guys for discussion.
Is there some... I've never seen the paintings. I'm probably here, but is there some reason that these are needed by a way? Or is it a political issue?
I'm not sure. Lynn, do you have any insight into that?
What is it a picture of?
It's a picture of the hill. It's an oil painting, and it's about, I don't know, maybe... It's a little bit bigger than an eight-by-ten, and it's in a wood frame. And it's a picture of the hill where the high school now stands, before the high school.
Is there a possibility, for example, to probably pay a little off and say, "Thank you," or "Thank you"? Perhaps having a contest, and every month somebody gets to display it in their own home? Or is it... Is that a good choice for this matter?
I think because the person who donated it has asked for it back, if we're not gonna display it, I think that's why we're all kind of on board with just giving it back.
How long have we had it?
We've had it since 2017.
Oh, so now it's been a 30 years.
Is the person asking for it back the same person who donated it, or is it another generation that's already asking for it?
I think it's the person who donated it.
I think it's the person who donated it.
Yeah. Yeah. I think our only concern is we didn't wanna set precedent that we were obligated to return works. I don't think this does. I think this is an exception.
Especially at the timing. Timing when it was donated was right before we were anticipating a new construction margin, and we weren't putting anything up. But now that we're going to be, we're going to be into a temporary space, it's just a long process, and it makes no sense.
Yeah, so we will get moving on that. Another item I kind of wanted to bring up for discussion is the Board of Trustees Google Drive. So that Google Drive is one through the town that is owned by Maureen. And it has been very difficult to get that ownership transferred in a way that's workable. And also, the town would like to... We are one of the last remaining Google Drives that they have, and they want it gone. And I'm gonna be getting us a Google Drive for staff use. And if we are going to own one, it makes sense for me to, I wanna open this up to you guys, move that Google Drive onto a new Google Drive for our working documents and then to be more consistent with all the other boards and committees because the town now has a new document system where we can have kind of a front-facing website for the Board of Trustees, and they can host minutes and agenda and anything else that we wanna put in there. There's also a lot of working documents in that drive and things that we wanna be able to work on openly that we wouldn't post on the town website until it's finalized and ready to go because it gets a little confusing when I go in there as like someone from the public and I wanna see the policy, but it's a redline version, and I'm not sure which one is the actual policy to look at. So this would clean that up. It's kind of two birds, one stone, but we need to do something with it only because Maureen is the owner. So we were thinking that would be the most elegant solution. And I don't think the websites existed for boards.
So the history of how we had our own Google Drive was way back, beginning of COVID, a little bit before that, when we started doing more, less paperwork and more electronic sharing and stuff. The town had the old website that was really not accessible to all town departments, and so we couldn't post things on the town site. So we started the Google Drive so that we could share agendas and stuff electronically all through COVID and then just kept going from there. And since then, the town has updated their website and now has a better system for storing this stuff. But we've just never assimilated because we already have our skeletons in houses. It makes sense. It's a great time to weave into the town system that everybody else is using.
So the town for public, the library one for in-progress, for private?
Correct. Yeah. And I mean, you know, nothing's really private.
Well, yes.
It's not finished documents.
Finished documents. Unfinished.
Yes. So that we can work on them.
Does it require new training?
No.
I'm an old school.
A good link. Oh, good.
Yes.
I'm not sure. I understand. So we would have, we would be done with this drive, and we would have a new drive that's part of the town?
No, so it would be a library-owned drive.
Okay. If someone searched on the town website for "library minutes," there's, I mean, it's a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, and they would help us get them all.
If you send, like, once the minutes are voted on, if you can send them to Town Clerk at Westboro.
Oh, I have.
Oh, you do? Oh, you do? Okay, great, great.
I do send them to her.
To, okay.
Yes.
Do you send ones that I do too?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so any minutes if they go through, she's supposed to be putting them up on the website.
Are they natural up there?
I haven't seen it. I see our agenda all the time.
Looked on other boards and they were.
There are problems with my email and...
Sounds bad.
I'll just send them again. I have a feeling that I just need to send them to Town.
That's helping me with that. But, you know, I just wanted to see if anybody had a reason that that wouldn't work.
I don't think that makes sense at this point.
So our meeting stuff would come up on the Google Drive until the meeting, and then everything that became finished would then go on by the town. And who would do that transfer?
So we would work on it with Town Hall. We've had a meeting with IT over there to figure out how to work on a number of other things, how to address this issue with our Google Drive. So I think we would work on transfer ship and all those pieces.
So everything that's on there now will go to the new drive, so we don't lose them?
Yeah, and then we'll share that out with this group.
Thank you.
Okay. Just have a couple of other items on here. So our open house is this Friday. It came right upon us. Theme is "Your Welcome at the Library." We're gonna have a laundry magician, character visits, pizza, of course, because why not? Get people in the building, whole bunch of other stuff, and music by the hip swayers. So we've got all hands on deck, a bunch of staff trying to figure out what we can offer this year. And we just wanted to ask each other to go in here. That open house is happening. We're excited for it. And we've got initiatives.
Yeah, if you want to come.
Oh, yes.
You are welcome.
Yes.
You are welcome.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Pizza servers, I mean, people down in Children's, yeah. Anywhere you would like to go.
I'm very experienced at serving.
Yeah, right. I know their case.
It's a gift.
So that will be alive on. I hope we get a good turnout. Yeah, so that's that. Next week, just as a FYI and heads up, it's gonna be the Association for Small Libraries Conference. It's kind of a partnership with the Bookmobile Services Conference. They kind of go hand in hand. ALA defines small as between under 25,000 population. It's semi-bid in there. I mean, we do, but... So this conference happens every year, and each year it happens in one of the regions. So this year it happens to be in the Northeast Region, it happens to be in Springfield. I had gotten a, I had won registration for it at PLA back in March, April, whatever it was. And then I got a scholarship to cover hotel and other costs, so it's not gonna cost us anything. The best thing about this particular conference is because it's geared towards small spaces, small staffs, small budgets, nothing has to be scaled to work where you're at. And I think in looking at moving to a temporary space where that's gonna be something we're gonna have to deal with, there's gonna be a lot of stuff that I'll be able to take from that and bring back here. There's also, there happens to be a very specific focus on fundraising and advocacy for small libraries. And so I'm really looking forward to go to those sessions and kind of seeing, you know, what they've got. So that is gonna be next week, Wednesday through Saturday. And I will report back next meeting. And then just kind of the last part is I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, the patrons, all of you guys as Board of Trustees. Many of you have reached out. If I haven't gotten back to you, it's because I've been in back-to-back meetings for the last... How long have I been here? Three weeks and two days? You know, jumping right into the building project and meeting deadlines for that. It's been really exciting. It's been really fun. It's been extremely exhausting. But I think we have a lot of opportunity ahead of us, and I'm really excited to be a part of that. So my main focus coming up is addressing physical library space and workspaces. So you may see things, you may have already seen it if you looked at the desk because today, today I did a little moving around. The things that we can kind of address now and then the things that have to wait in terms of the buildings, we may see a little bit of rearranging. One of the things that I had mentioned to Mary is doing some rearranging of the third floor now, addressing some workspace issues, figuring out how we can workflow that area better and highlight that area right above the stairs with that beautiful skylight and really make that pop and usable. So one of the things I'm gonna be looking into is kind of, until we can get a really nice table, maybe moving out where the trustees' room table is into that area, removing that kind of faking plywood wall and clearing out that area to make it a really beautiful table, sitting, meeting area right above the stairs. And so you're not also having meetings in someone's workspace, which always feels a little awkward to me when we're in there. And then being able to kind of have a small conference table for staff to work at and work table and have adequate desks for the staffs that we need to work in that space. And kind of doing that as proof of concept, so we can see if that works for us moving into the redesign of the building. So that's one of the things. Circulation got a little bit of a mix-up today. We're gonna try... Everything is, everything's in beta, right? Like, we're gonna try it out. We're gonna see how it goes. Everything can be moved back if we don't like it, but if we don't try it, we'll never know. So that's kind of where I'm at with physical library space and workspaces. We're also gonna be taking a look at logo, branding guidelines, and marketing for a number of reasons. But I wanna bring it up tonight because I'm feeling like we are six months away from a very important vote. And I think that's what we're all kind of laser-focused on, is how important this is. And I've gone back. I've watched all the meetings. I've tried to get as much knowledge as I can about the process so far and where we're at kind of in terms of community and community support. And one of the things that really stuck in my mind is that this, the main goal of this project is to explain that this is a different project. This is not the same project that we voted on before. This is not the project that has a lot of history and past attached to it that may impact voting. And I feel like a part of this discussion has to be, how do we make it look and feel different? And I think that was part of the reason that the previous logo that was done, I think, 20...
I'm looking for that.
Eighteen. Some five years ago. I think that was the reasoning behind that, to kind of set the tone for this project. And I think for the same reason, it's important to do it again and have a fresh look to really mark this as a new project, a new undertaking, a repair. And so I have been working on some options in-house. I'm not asking for money for this. I'm gonna get it done and figure this out. And so what I wanted to bring up to you guys is I wanted to ask how we were feeling about that. And then secondarily, because I know you're all gonna say, "I feel great about that. That's wonderful." I would love the logo, whatever the very simple new plain crisp logo is, to be staff-driven. And so I wanted to know how we felt about allowing the staff to choose it out of options that I provide.
And I just have a question. When you say logo, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so I mean, color, color font and kind of stuff. Because I mean, I understand where we're going with that. But I will say in almost every one-on-one with staff I've had, they don't feel connected to it. And so I'm trying to come up with something that says "library" and that's recognizable, you know? So if that is on, you know, a slide from LPAA, you know it's a library project. So I don't know how you guys feel about that.
I'm just thinking that with the nine-member board when we do this one, it seemed like it was really hard for nine people to come to consensus. Now, I may be misremembering because I... You didn't pick my role. But I'm wondering, is it, is that gonna be too many people? Is it gonna... Are you asking for their input in the design or...
So what my plan is, is to come up with five or six viable options, but I would be happy with any one of them, open it up to staff commentary, and then a vote.
So are you gonna design it?
Yes. Well, I'm gonna pull on my resources, call in some favors.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm gonna call in some favors.
If you had someone who was accustomed to designing logos, and then they were working with the staff, I would say fine. But if staff has no idea what's gonna market to get money as well as clients, that makes it difficult. And then it makes it difficult when you wanna raise money and use that logo as your talking point and see how everything. So I would suggest that the where to look would be at any of the colleges to get a student who is in marketing who is looking for an internship and ask them to do it. They do amazing work, and I've had a lot of my logos that were designed that had become, you know, historic pieces when I was before because they were so just, you know, you knew what it was and you could identify it, and it showed everything you wanted it to see. So I would say, fine, it's the staff to embrace it and be part of it, but have a leader working with you that has a design background.
I think it's good, yes.
I think the timing of it makes complete sense, and we are really trying to drive home the point that this is a different project. We get it. This is totally different. And also the recognizability of the library. We want that message out, though, that this is what represents our library. And so I think the timing makes sense, reasoning makes sense. I like the connection to the staff. I think it's important. Totally fine with that. Seems like everybody...
So who would go on in the end? Would it be us?
Staff.
Start with staff, what's left?
Yeah.
And only because we have a really short turnaround time, if we want it to mean anything.
I think my suggestion, I also remember Kate, but we had a lot of choices. And that was part of the problem. So I think the more narrow fields, you know, good choices, but now we... We remember pages of like, where was that one I liked? You know, there was just a lot. And a lot of variations of individual ones. A lot to choose from, a lot through that whole process. But I think the important piece of that was that we also went into the mission and the vision a lot. So there was a lot of work done beyond just the visual logo. So, you know, this is just taking that out.
So that's great. It's good timing for that as we're looking at our strategic planning, that that's new too, that this might be a call towards that new strategic plan as well. So that's actually a good point.
And it would be very worthwhile in terms of marketing if you had everything in place. You drop the logo and then say, "Here's how much we raise, we're all set to go."
Yeah.
Instead of, eventually I thought was a good idea, they put out the logo and they didn't have any announcement to make to go with it.
Right.
The whole idea is to go "Ta-da!"
Yeah, it needs to be logo and templates and all the basics that go with that. I've done projects like this before, so I've been a marketing librarian at two other libraries and worked on a mall, oh, I don't know, a mall where I changed theirs, but they're old, but I made. I don't know if it held up so well for so many years, I don't know, 10 years. But yeah, I think that absolutely, let's make it a big, you know, a big push. And I think now that in terms of library building, we have some ideas of finishes and what they're going for, that we can kind of match these up and also have it be something that eschers us into a new look for the physical library as well. So yeah, maybe we'll narrow it down with leadership depth and then take those options and put it out to us. It's great advice. Thank you. That's it. That's my whole thing. I'm sorry it took up so much time. I'll be more brief.
That's okay.
Thanks. I dropped it.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Next up is the library repair project update. Ed is not here. I'm not at the last meeting, so if either of you two feel comfortable, if that, we have Ed send out.
I mean, we can talk about where we're at. We've had a bunch of meetings. The last meeting, really what we've been working towards is getting a really accurate cost estimate, so narrowing everything down. So narrowing everything down so that when we go out for a second analysis on our costs, that it's really, really accurate and make sure that it is at an ask that makes sense for what we promised. And so we've been going through each line item, figuring out where we can do cost savings. There's been a considerable number of decisions made looking towards cost savings, which has been really amazing work to see, honestly. We have been like, we have a meeting planned to talk about outlets and data points. And so every single thing is being looked at. And we had a meeting with the finishings to look at color schemes, carpets and kind of like the, the big picture look, overall looking feel. I feel really good about it. I think the whole committee felt really good about it. It was exciting, it looked great, minor tweaks here and there. And so that will go to the larger library repair project group and then assuming here. That's, it feels like, I mean, there's so much going on.
I think they want to draw up bid documents by December. That's their goal. So all of these numbers need to be finalized pretty soon.
One of them.
I listened to those two because, as I said, I didn't understand any of the words they were using. I was so out of my, one hundred percent design.
Yes.
And there was a very, a lot of excitement in the last one about something came in in their favor.
Oh, so we got the variants for the front historic entrance of the building. We do not have to alter it. And that's a savings of around $600,000.
Huge and a beautiful.
And we get to maintain the front.
I knew there was something exciting about that.
Right.
That was very exciting.
And I wish, I really wish everyone in town could see those meetings. Because that last one, I know they emailed Ed and asked what value engineering was because I'm not quite sure what that was.
It's how we get creative. We say, no, I have money.
But I mean, we went through every railing. Let's take that little last thing up here. Let's make this still steel instead of wood. I mean, the care that this committee has taken to make sure they're not spending a minimum amount, they absolutely have to, is really impressive.
We're trying.
So yeah, we're trying.
It's been amazing. Ed has taken up probably, I don't know, my time, but it's been time well spent. Because this is something that, you know, we want to love and grow into and make sure that it's matching our needs. So.
I wonder Kate is jumping onto the library building committee.
Oh, yes.
We actually need to vote to appoint Kate onto the library building committee. So if you're all for it, I would take a motion.
Okay, I know to.
Thank you.
Put Kate on that awesome agenda.
All right, all in favor? Thanks a ton. I will officially write you an appointment letter tonight.
Now, how much are they charging for the casters? The whole story you told about casters.
Oh, I don't know. I mean, really, everything's going on. It's so, we haven't gotten down to all the furniture choice. It's, we'll see, but everything is mobile and usable.
It was such an interesting idea. I wondered how they were.
And we talked about the casters at the Congress meeting, actually. We had a little conversation with the librarians over there. Because I was saying, no, I think, didn't she say, and they're like, yes! They were very excited about the caster.
They were excited about the caster.
Well, I'm glad.
On all of the shelving, we can see the spaces.
Moving around.
So that's how we created large meetings.
It will be one way for sure. Yes.
For the October, the special meeting, are there any library boards there?
No, I think we're going to do an update, but there's no. There won't be any vote. It's just March.
March.
Six months.
I think my math is right.
Yeah.
No, it's a matter of time.
And you're doing the art paper.
Oh, yes. I've been working, so I've met, today I met Asha from Town Hall to work on the art paper temporary space, to figure out what we need in terms of square footage, if there's any special asks we have. I review like three or four other libraries who have recently got through this process to make sure that we're asking for everything that they need and identifying a temporary space that's going to work for us. So we will see. We will see. Next week, that will be finalized and go to the next library building committee.
Which is now meeting every two weeks?
Yes.
It is. There are a lot of community parts.
So when I'm sending next meeting?
The 10th of September.
Who's that?
That was, yes, that was next Tuesday.
Those are all Zoom.
And they're all on Zoom, 3:30 to 5:00 on Tuesdays.
Our recordings are in direct.
Yes.
That's where all my staff meetings are. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll put it up during the summer.
See you later.
Hi. Any questions on the library repair project?
Stay tuned. The next couple of months will get exciting. That brings us up to the strategic plan update.
All right, well, this is kind of terrible news. Deb Odley had a medical emergency and has been kind of out of commission. She's going to get us our plan by the middle of the month, which will mean that we'll need to have a special meeting to vote on that before October 1st.
Yes.
Whatever the deadline is.
It's the first, well, it's that first week.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't say October is just the first.
I know, I know. That's maybe the first, yeah. So, so we do need to meet before our next scheduled meeting.
So.
Does it need to be a meeting meeting or can there be?
I think it could be a Zoom meeting. I think we can send out the, the plan to everybody and you can read it and then we can convene.
So since we don't know when that plan's going to come in right now, is everyone okay with a little flexibility? As soon as you get, as soon as you get the plan, next meeting, the plan's in. And I will shoot out a message once everyone's available this week. So I'll give a couple of days to review it and then we'll hop on Zoom. So if that's okay with everyone to have a little flexibility before we set the meeting, set the meeting up. We don't know when that plan's coming.
I just have students until 6:30.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, we can hop on, I mean, it'll be quick. So we can hop on a little bit. I don't think I'm in my house before 7:30 o'clock at night anyway.
All right, that sounds good. Very sorry to hear that about Deb.
Do you have an address for her? Can we send her a get one message or something or email me?
I, I do.
Or you just send it, you know, like, yeah.
Um, yeah, she was, she was on the mend. She was trying to get back into things. And yeah, she felt terrible about everything and I'm like, I'm very fine. Our only thing is we really do want to get.
Well, if she was taken off for it to Katie, I'd have.
Right, no, no, no.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, that brings us up to policy revisions. Start with the library of things. So it's in the policy manual. And I do think, while I understand the why behind putting all the policies together in a manual, I do want us to consider pulling them back out separately.
Tell me that. Tell me your thoughts.
Because we have made an edit to two policies and they're having to itemize the page and edit the entire thing instead of just focusing on a two-page policy. And I have never seen it done this way in a library. It's always individual policies that are posted separately. So someone just wants to say, I'm just interested in their, I don't know, library of things policy. Boom, I can pull it up, I can hand it to them. It's not like a giant packet. I think because there were so many edits together, this made perfect sense. So don't need to, maybe zoom, could I, or anything like that? I just want us to consider possibly pulling them out again. But today's revisions and also the policy, there was some redlining stuff that was from Maureen. I wasn't sure if those had been voted on.
No. So what is voted on is non-redlined stuff as she was going through final edits. She redlined some stuff to say, the next time you look at this, we found this stuff that we should update, but didn't matter to the meat of it now. So she was like, no point in, but those were like future thoughts as she was putting it together.
Okay, so that makes more sense. Here we go. So the particular edits that we're looking at are located on pages 20 to 22. So it's the library of things policy, and this is a little bit of cleanup. So we have kind of, yeah, we have some. So really what we've done is removed the entire middle section that like specifies very specifically what is in it, only because then if we deaccession an item, we're having to come back to the more into a drone's policy. So it makes more sense just to say they may include items that are like this and not be so specific about what's in it in a policy document, so that that made sense.
So the technology is different?
Yes, that's all right.
And then removing the, on a first come, first served basis and allowing the idea holds, which is cleanup because we've stopped using kind of the asset tracking system. So again, just more cleanup, making it more accessible. And removing the hotspots are available to us for residents only. I think those are the only.
The only light, I think.
Hotspots are available to everybody.
Used to be only for less girl residents, but now we have way more than we used to have. And people aren't as frequently, so it's not as much about high demand, it's a must. So there's plenty to look.
Well, I read the whole book this week because I had forwarded and, well, because we were supposed to go over it, so I did. I read it. It's, it's not a good thing for me. It looks good for me.
Yeah.
What I like about the library things is where they're talking about the items that are in there. They talk about a thing with a capital T and I, I just kind of like that.
Yes, that is a very, that's a very library thing.
Is it ugly?
I'm really proud of that, of that capital T. Uh, so that's kind of the first one. And then the secondary one is located on pages, my page is 63, 64.
And then it'll mean because we made the change of record, it switches the pages, so hold on.
It's.
Hold on, we. What would you do that? Let's vote on this? Because they are separate policies inside a document.
Yes.
So let's vote on the library of thing policy. Well, question, well, let's open up a motion and then we can have the discussion about it.
I move that we approve the policy.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
I move that we approve the library of things policy updates. Is that right?
Yep, yep. And you're seconding it. Okay, so then I'll open it up for a discussion about this policy.
I just caught my eye in home improvement of assisted, assisted devices. Is that home improvement or assisted device?
Get messy.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't know, it just caught my eye. Usually I don't, I just type those.
Makes sense to me. Okay, that's a cross out.
Where are you?
I was just looking at the Wi-Fi hotspots. I need to apparently go down. I can see a cross out now.
Oh, no, it is confusing. But it does make sense. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion about this? So then I will take a motion, I will take a vote on amending the policy as written plus that edit from Kate. All in favor? Any opposed? Fantastic. Okay, so then the next policy.
Okay, so the next policy is our social media policy. This is on page 65. And it's just one added bullet. And the bullet added.
That says.
Oh, yeah. Uh, just adds.
It's on the next page and it's just the one bullet.
Addition means. It adds on what says bullet 11 but will be 10. At the discretion of the library director and/or library staff, comments from the public may be deleted, hidden based on the following criteria. So we already have on there proofread of seed cover, like all of the kind of boilerplate things. What we wanted to add is comments or content not typically related to the particular site, post or article being commented on. This puts us in line with the town's social media policy because of our social media standing as a limited public forum, however we see it. So we wanted to make sure that we were in line with the town's policy. Absolutely. Comments or content not typically related to the particular site, post or article being commented on. So for.
And this is the list of things that we don't.
So this is, so this is underneath number 11, which will be 10.
Yes.
Right. That says at the discretion, the whole thing says, at the discretion of the library director and/or library staff, comments from the public may be deleted slash hidden based on the following criteria. And they'd like to add in, the criteria being, this is the added now, comments or content not typically related to the particular site, post or article being commented on. So somebody posts an article about a flag and somebody else starts posting about the flowers outside. It has nothing to do with what was posted, obviously in a much more offensive way, but like that. So that's the criteria.
I just want to clarify. You said not typically, yours says not topically.
Topically.
I just want to make sure which one it is. It's, it's not topically, right?
Topically, it is.
Okay.
Content not topically related to the particular site.
Right. I, it makes sense to me. And you said that's in line with other.
With the town's social media policy, yeah.
Okay. Than that.
So I will take a motion to make this addition to the policy, this edit to the policy. Second on that. From Kate, I'll open up discussion on that policy. Anybody have any questions, concerns, other, further edits for that policy?
Who seconded it?
Kate did.
Seconded it then? All right, all in favor of the set?
Thank you.
All of those? Any other? Great. All right. Here we go. Okay. Standing agenda items, open items list.
It was, it was usually in the agenda. I love it. So good.
All right.
So good.
Do we have the suggestion, any suggestion box? Did we check the suggestion box?
So.
There were.
There were three things in the suggestion box. They're all from a patron who is a regular patron and they were all related to items that should have just been addressed to our circulation supervisor. Regarding like a missing magazine or why do we have this magazine, that sort of thing.
Yes, we have given them to her to.
Perpetual.
Handle.
Thank you. We're working on relationship building. We just got a meeting yesterday. Quarterly newsletter, still ongoing.
Actually, can I just ask, is there anything we've discussed that should be added to the items list? Because I have.
Strategic plan is on there already. No, and updated. Yes. Data collection, statistics.
Nope. Okay.
Not even mentioning the burden supply. Nothing is happening on the burden supply. A strategic plan is ongoing.
Okay.
Great. Thought I could do it. Trustee community outreach has been on hold. You haven't gone to the same, right? It's been on hold because.
Kate and I met yesterday.
Okay.
And we're starting to make a plan.
Yep.
And so I'll get back to you at the next meeting and let you know what's going on.
Yep, so we asked for Kate to have some break in time and to onboard and all of that before.
I respected it to the day. You told me I couldn't go till the end of August. I went up to the beginning of September.
You told me.
I said, I'm not going to look at her some time.
Give her time. She's got a lot going on. Okay. And then, yes.
Also with the outreach to the Boy Scouts and the Public Theater.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it's done, but Bernadette was going to be out on leave for a few weeks. And she, because I thought tomorrow would have been a great, you know. And she said, oh, please don't do it. And I was like, I was never, never told them to do that. So it's on hiatus until she comes back and then he will come all dressed up when he gets his. And I'm going to attend his.
Eagle.
Eagle, Cortez. And, um, and then I made contact with the head of the Boy Scouts in this, you know, club here and about other projects that the library could use. So if some committee of the people, the staff came up with ideas of what some middle school and high school boys and girls could do, they would, you know, like ideas. That would be pertinent, not just, oh, I'd like to do this.
I, I think though, it needs to come from the boys.
Yes, but I mean, all the real ideas.
They can't hand them a list. Like, they are supposed to be doing the research and making the connections at the libraries. It would be.
Right, but we don't want to say yes if it's not something they want.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm not, I don't say anything to the outside world tonight. Facts, just, uh, those boys need to.
No, but I don't want to say, oh, yes, do yes, and get all excited and then it's not anything that would be of interest.
And.
It's true, but he would.
He's with one hundred.
One, yeah, that's the one they have. And, uh, he said he produced, um, and he said if you can't afford it, he's fine. And I ordered a puppet and I had it, I. The Nagle Day, uh, Boy Scout uniform with a badge.
No, I'm kidding.
It's a little boy puppet so that he could have it, um, be the first behind the scenes to do it, so.
That's great. Um. Can you and I connect after on that? Because I would like to put together some sort of proclamation from the trustees that you can present as equals.
Oh, yeah, I would do that. And then I don't know if it's, I can. Yes, the, um. Where are the, those people, the foundation?
Well, we'll get that.
Okay, we're not there yet, instead of agenda items.
Oh, yeah, I'm in the wrong place. Yep, no, because right now we're still up in standing agenda items.
Oh, okay.
Community outreach. Um, okay. Um, so then that brings us to library director, assistant director issues. Anything we haven't talked about yet? I don't know. Alright, I mean, I wish I had a better, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on a better term than issues because it's, it's not great.
Yeah, maybe we all have issues.
Topic.
Topic.
I have one thing that I would like to, um.
Concerns.
I know, but it's not, sometimes it's just ideas. Uh, this one's an idea, it's not a concern, but, um. I have been working with Kate as she's onboarding and planning for her success here and how ways to support her and, um. One of the things I was like toying around with was putting together some sort of group of people to help support our director as she onboards and acclimates into the community and kind of like an advisory council, we kind of talked about. Different ways to do that, and so I'd like to propose that we for, that we form a committee of trustees that would act as an administration director advisory committee. Um, it would be non-quorum, so four, three to four of us that are willing to meet regularly. Um, I'm not talking every week, but, um, but regularly with Kate to just help her navigate being part of our community, future for that. Like a sounding board for any director or personnel issues that she can just like, hey, this is what's happening. This is, you know, a vital connection I think we haven't had in the past. Um, especially when I think about all this time when we sit down to do a directory report. And, you know, some people like, oh, I wish I got to work more, you know, one-on-one more so I have more input, and I think this is a great way to do that. So if you were interested in, um, doing that, please send me an email with your interests, like reasons why, you know, just a little blurb of why you might be interested in sitting in that. As well as what your availability would be for meeting times, and then I will look at who's interested and who's best lines up to timeline to put together an advisory committee to help, and then that committee would, would be an official committee, so therefore they would take notes and report back to the trustee, meaning things that came up.
Do you anticipate the meetings for this group would be during work hours or in the evening?
Um.
Or is that TV day?
I would say late afternoon. At three, three, four o'clock. So.
Well, another outreach is that I have a TV show on Westboro TD. And I would, it's called Kaleidoscope, and I would like to be the first to introduce the, um, library director to the community.
So great, great effort.
Absolutely.
And it's fun, and they're really lovely at the TV studios.
They are lovely, yeah.
Um, yeah, and it's, I, I just didn't know it, that was something that was, um, you know, you had to, you had to have your agent come talk to you.
I do, yes, I have a fee.
Yeah.
That's good. No, I would love to do that, but let me, let me get my head around.
Yes, oh, no, until, I would figure like December.
My first. Oh, yeah.
Because.
That's perfect timing.
Give you a little time.
Yeah.
That's okay.
So back to, um, advisory committee, if you were interested, I'm gonna put out, um, please have letters of interest emailed to me by September 10. And then I would like to get that form to be opened so that we can help support you and transition you into this role best as possible.
Okay.
Um, then we bring to the treasures report. Click the.
I think we are right on target.
Yeah.
There's nothing.
That looks good.
But it's, uh.
Shocking.
Red flaggy.
I love months like that, and I love those months. Fall is a good time for that.
Yeah.
Fall is no rain. It's a good time, that's good. Anybody have any questions about? About, huh? I have a question.
Anything?
Don't we typically use like ninety percent of the like? One of our budgets for like all the memberships that roll in right away?
Five, two, four, three, C. So last year, the assessment was incorrectly calculated. And we did not have enough money, so that immediately went.
Okay.
So this year, we made sure we had more.
Perfect, okay, so I was like, oh, come on, not, no, 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 no.
Um, it's the last one here, this five, two, four, three, C. That's where our CW Mars assessment was at.
Oh, no. How does that happen?
It wasn't correctly calculated. I am not, I am honestly, I'm not sure, by the time it came through finance, I'm like, why, I don't think this is enough.
I love the expression.
And, uh, we, we made it work. We made it work.
Of course you were.
Yeah.
That, that was the only thing that I was like, how come we didn't find out what it is?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Great, perfect.
And also Kate's gonna be going through everything that we spent on.
She's already ahead of your budget.
And what we're handling, so, so, yeah.
I like fuel and oil, we don't even use oil? No, we don't.
We don't.
Um, and we're heading into budget season from May twenty-sixth, so, um, that will. And we've got a new, new finance director.
Yes.
So that will be.
I'm sure there'll be tweaks and changes all along.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, um, I'll take a motion to accept the treasures report. If I like, second, I'm sorry.
Mary.
And then open up discussion. Like I'm trying to do it more along the lines of procedural order. Alright, all in favor? That one opposed?
I'm sorry.
That was Mike.
Mike.
And Mary.
Okay.
No offense, Kate got you earlier in the vote.
That's okay.
Pardon me, I just want to make sure it gets done.
Gets done, exactly.
Me too.
No. So that brings us up to our minutes from the July twenty-fourth meeting. Seems so far, what I've seen right now. Everything looked good to me. I didn't pick up any edits that needed to be made.
Well, I'm offended because my last name's misspelled.
Was it? I'm sorry, as I'm typing it, I'm, I'm like, I've gotta get this down because I'm.
Had I seen that, be like, I checked in the journal.
Honestly, let me make sure. See, I have to always sit across from you, this is the way.
One R, one R.
But it's the one that everybody, everybody does the double R.
It was the one that was messed up on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna fix it right now.
Under directive, I, I just tweaked it.
Okay, you fixed it?
Well, I fixed it in one spot, so I did get it fine.
We'll fix it in all the spots.
Thank you.
Okay.
You should know I'm a terrible speller. Just so you know.
Was it wrong in multiple spots?
It is.
Oh, yes, there it is.
Well, now it's burned into your memory, that last name, it's not every time.
Alright, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes for the January, June twenty-sixth. I think it's a July, hold on, the date's wrong.
Is it?
It's right in the, um.
Oh, it's up there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's odd. It was summer, people.
I get you, I hear you, hold on.
July?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. I don't know what was happening there.
To approve the July twenty-fourth meeting. Kate, um, Jenny.
Jenny.
Take a second on that motion? Kate, any discussion or further edits? Okay, all in favor?
I was in here, so.
One up, one up, still. Keeps it exciting.
Nothing to mock.
You, you were not.
I was.
That brings us up to our Friends and Foundation report. So, um, Wendy Comey was originally supposed to join us for tonight's meeting. But then there was a mix-up, which, I didn't think it was on the agenda, but it actually was on the agenda, but then I didn't see her email earlier today asking, should I come, should not. So what she did instead was send me her report and then offered to come to another meeting to present to us, so I will take her up on that offer for next month's meeting. If that, if she, that works for her, that would be after, um, to give us a presentation, but I will give you the rundown on her report momentarily. Here we go, okay. Book sales continue to be their main source of income, being very popular, um, that's what they depend mostly on, um, from donations from the community. It's always surprisingly strong. Square was set up to take credit cards in the mini golf in twenty-twenty-two. Um, there's not much call for credit transaction during the book sales, but the option might be useful for donations and memberships going forward. The library book sales are held on the lawn from Saturdays from May through October and are most successful, and inside sales held on Saturdays and Sundays, November through April. Um, there's no sale held in December, typically this room is used for, um.
December, so.
The holiday store, correct. Committee leadership, the Friends continue to operate through a committee, leadership committee, the committee includes a president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, as well as two of, two to four other people who help memberships sorting and communication. All members of the leadership committee are involved in decision-making and meet on a quarterly basis and discuss other library issues as necessary through texts and emails. At our annual meeting in January, the issue of term limits was brought up, as many nonprofit organizations have limits in place. There was a concern that this was mandated in our bylaws. If it was stated, it would mean that as of the end of twenty-twenty-three, I, as treasurer, would have reached the end of my allowable term. As no one was standing in line and clapping to be held treasure for an opposition, we are pleased to find out that our bylaws have no such. It did, however, lead to a good discussion of what was needed in case a position suddenly became available. And so we now have specific position guides for secretary and treasurer. Um, at the January meeting, the following members were elected or re-elected. Kevin Johnson was re-elected president, Eric Waite was elected vice president, Sandy Leary was re-elected secretary, Wendy Comey re-elected treasurer. Teresa Vinci remained on the leadership committee, Stephanie Oaken remained on the leadership committee, as well as Shannon Carter-Pelina. Membership volunteers continue to grow from last year, specifically in the area of book sorting, this is the biggest and most continuous need. Twenty-twenty-three, they had three excellent women who got involved in sorting, and these three have continued into twenty-twenty-four and have become very good friends. We also.
These.
Exactly, they're fabulous. Um, we also had a few others join in sorting as well. These volunteers, along with other friends like Mary Christensen and Kevin Johnson, who helped out when they can, have given Friends the best sorting staff of recent years. Financial rundown and for twenty-twenty-three, each year the library submits a budget, so far there has never been an item when we were not able to fund all requests. So for income, I will send this out so you can read, I'm not gonna read it every single line, but income, total deposits, uh, twenty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-eight, and their expenses was twenty-three thousand nine hundred twelve. Um, so they're doing very well. Twenty-twenty-four, so far early this year, we received two generous donations from groups in town that have helped fund popular museum passes. Both the civic club and the women's club donated a thousand dollars each, in both cases, the organization chose certain museum passes that they wanted to sponsor, and our circulation manager manages the passes and developed a system so that they receive recognition for their sponsorship. Both groups have indicated that they would like this can be continuing to on, ongoing. This year, we received an unexpected unrestricted donation of a thousand dollars, and for the past several years, we have received an annual unrestricted donation of two thousand five hundred, and these have helped greatly. So I appreciate the update from the Friends and I look forward to a future presentation.
Can you forward that on?
I will forward that on, so, yeah, for that, and then you all can see the nitty-gritty of the numbers. So it looks good. You can ask me questions, but I probably don't know answers for you on that, but I encourage everybody to, um, reach out to any of the Friends, they have to see if they're interested in joining the Friends. It's a great organization that, that helps us dearly here, so they do a lot of great work. And then, um, foundation, we do not have an update.
Oh, yes, this is quite interesting. But first of all, the, the sale place would be a really good place to have a table for outreach about the building. And have just people stop by to see what's cooking about the building so that they get feeling that the books that they're buying has going to something. And that there's that. When I spoke to Wendy, she had told me that back when it was going to be the reconstruction of the building, they had given, um, a thousand dollars to the foundation.
It was actually ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Ten thousand, yeah, ten thousand.
A thousand, yeah.
And when I asked for a list of the people on that, um, foundation board, no one has a list. Then I spoke with that lovely lady that's in your office that did all that, Caitlin, that did all the redoing of all the numbers downstairs, I just love that. They haven't had a meeting here since twenty-nineteen. And I don't know if they're meeting privately, but when we were having Kate's interview and the other gentleman's interview, one of the women who had been in the leadership of that organization was in the audience. So I approached her, I had sent her four emails, but never come to lie. She was very emotional, started to cry and say, the board of trustees cannot tell the foundation what to do. And I said, apparently she told me that there had been a little bit of a rift between the, um, the former director and her. And I said, but that's not my intention, you know, we know each other, and I said, it's not that at all, could we get together and talk about it? And then she cries more about the loss of her father, so I said, alright, you know, it's not a good time. But I cannot find another person who knows anyone who is on that committee, or where they meet, or what they're doing with any money, if any, that they've ever raised. Do you have any clues?
Ball is.
I called, I texted Ed Ball.
Ed Ball.
And he never returned.
He spoke, he spoke up at.
Jim Ball?
So be Jim Ball.
Jim Ball.
Jim Ball, yeah. And he spoke at that meeting.
Yes, he gets how meeting, he spoke about this, the most recent time meeting.
Right.
Oh, the most recent?
Yeah.
And what did he say?
He said that the foundation, that they were intending to raise money.
I know, committed to supporting the project.
Committing to, yeah.
Give more details, we'll have them.
But they're not willing to share who's on their board or with someone who's a trustee?
I honestly don't know, no, we've reached out several times and. And to not know where you.
How much is that?
Money they have?
Yeah.
That, because the Friends have said they've gave them the money for the new building, so where is that money?
Right. Right.
Should, should we perhaps, uh, think in.
Because they did, they did that at one of our, um, open houses.
At our open house, yeah.
Should we perhaps think in terms of establishing a, um. A trustee to be a permanent liaison with.
Well, that's me.
Oh, wait, okay, is, is, I mean, is this official?
And these are people. Yes, yeah, and I have, um.
Well, then how do we get you some help?
Well, I was originally on the original building committee, um, you know, when they were doing the, um, construction. And on the people on the committee, typically when I've been on building projects, you have money that you privately raised that, so when you'd announce your building, you could put up the thermostat that's half-built. They had not done any of that, and they said, oh, you just, because you're from Connecticut, you do things too fast. No. How are you gonna come up with the money? And so they, it was very, uh, and then they just started changing the night. Every, every time I would ask what night it is, it's gonna be on a Tuesday, what's gonna be on a Wednesday, it's gonna be on Thursday, well, I don't have that ability to shuffle around. And so I said, just tell me and I will come to as many as I can, and I never got a notice after that, so I withdrew. But I contacted every person that I knew that was on that, and they don't know anyone who's on the.
When?
When?
I know what you're talking about, and what timeframe was that?
Two thousand and eighteen. And two, two thousand and, I think I was there six months, seven months. And they kept switching the date and it was ridiculous, I couldn't keep up with it. Um, so I withdrew. But they didn't like the fact that someone else was on the group was challenging anything that they said. So when I just talked to this woman who I've known socially, I've met her several times, she was just crying and saying, no, I can't deal with it. Um, it's, all those trustees are trying to tell us what to do and we're, we're not answering to them. I went, what?
I know that I've raised the question a few times, that we need to know what's going on. Are they raising money, are they not raising money, and we've gotten no response.
Exactly.
At least more inclusion, you've gotten responsive.
And there seems to be a legal issue as well, if they're raising money in the library's name, and we don't know. and we don't know what they're saying to people that they're doing it for, that puts the library in a really unsafe, you know, in terms of the money.
I don't think it puts us in an unsafe space, cause they're an independent organization. It's not a great look, but I don't see it.
But nobody would know that, that's what I mean, it's attached to the library, now that's.
No, I understand, but I, I want to be very clear that it is a separate organization, so it doesn't open us up to liability and that. It's not a great message, right, like, so we want to be careful of that, but they are an independent organization.
Right, and we can't have a, a member, a trustee on the board.
Correct, nobody's on the board, no.
Not as a liaison.
But we can have a liaison, just to.
For communication.
For communication.
And that's all I said, I will not say a word, I will just go back and say what was happening. It's not my place to speak there. It's separate from raising money, what happened to that ten thousand dollars, where's that? Well, and, and Wendy was going to look into it.
Okay, so I, I got an email today from Maureen Johnson.
That's weird.
Reaching out and asking to meet.
Wonderful.
And I gave her a bunch of, well, I gave her a couple of days because that's all I have. And she hasn't got back to me, but that was just today.
And she contacted you.
She contacted me, so I had had a meeting with Bill. And he, I had asked him about foundation and he kind of connected us, sent an email, and then she reached out. So this is first point of contact. So why don't I meet with her?
Yeah, I was gonna say, at this point, why don't we let Kate head it up? And we'll see where that goes and then communicate back and we'll take it from there.
Previous libraries I've worked at who have foundations, generally what would happen is the head of the foundation, whomever that was, would give a report at the trustee meeting.
Yeah.
Every month, would come and give a report.
Hoping for, so we'd like to do that, so when you meet with her, tell her that's what we're looking for.
Yes, great, no one else has to go to another meeting.
Yeah, and I think it's an opportunity to start fresh and let go of any feelings and focus on what's important, which is raising money towards this redesign.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But just, I sent her a lovely sympathy card and said that I'm sorry that, you know, she had such a difficult time. And this has nothing to do with, you know, talking with her about it, the library. I realized we were just, she was in tears.
That's too bad.
I felt so badly and, and all I just said was, when are you meetings? And where do you meet? Cause you don't meet at the library.
She's, and she's a very generous person.
Yeah.
Absolutely, very kind.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna go from there.
Kate will start with it and then hopefully we'll have an update. That sounds good, thank you for your help. We'll let Kate take it over from there. So cross that off your list.
Okay.
Okay. So agenda items for next month meeting. And I hope that we're gonna keep the Friends and Foundation on there. We're gonna connect with Wendy and tell her that's always a standing item on our list, just so she knows and that she's welcome to come back and we would love to have an actual presentation from her, cause they do such great work. And I think as our role of trustee is part of advocacy, we really can try to connect with some people in the groups that we're in, see if there's any other people that could help join the Friends. I think that would be a great use of our time and energy. Anything else? We're gonna have, well, strategic plan will be before then. So, all right, sounds good. Then it is eight twenty eight. I'm sorry, what, what day is our next meeting? Right now, it's October second. Yes, oh, I will not be able to attend, is there somebody who can take the minutes? We love that whole table, we love being here.
Yes.
That are. Thank you. Awesome, thank you. All right.
Did we set a date for the one, the other meeting?
Yeah, we have.
No.
We, we.
Comes in.
Yeah.
Okay, then at eight twenty nine, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second in, Mike, all in favor? Thank you and thank you Westboro TV for being here.